Today's Dayton City Council meeting on July 6th, 2021, 7:00 p.m. Roll call, please, Mr. Legger.
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Member Volker.
Here.
Member Neary.
Here.
Member Neiman.
Here.
Member Kelly.
Here.
Member Lovins.
Yes.
Member Basler.
Here.
City Administrator Fawcett.
Here.
City Attorney Evanson.
Here.
Full house, I always love that, thank you very much. Now, we would like to take a moment to rise for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. For the mayor's report this week, I'd like to acknowledge our first responders, especially the fire department for the 4th of July work. We survived and we did a very good job. You guys are awesome and we're very happy to have you on our team. So, thank you guys and your team. We've got a lot of other things going through the city administrators' report. We have some property acquisitions that we're excited about and we'll go through those with the city administration's report. So, we'll move on to the department heads' report. We'll start off with fire, please.
Thanks, sir. You all have my report. Touch on a few things in that. I guess the big thing, 4th of July was safe, we were busy. Court just mostly EMS calls, a couple of like brush fires, things like that, nothing significant. But the squad, as usual, ran the wheels off. I'm gonna get right to the meat of this. So, second page in my report, again, I mentioned how we were losing people to other departments. We lost, we're short one right now. We've lost one to Fort Wright, making about $14,000 more a year starting out. He's walking the door making more than my 20-year captains are making now. This continues to be a problem. I have addressed this over and over to the point I feel like I'm a broken record with you all, both cities. Over the last four years, we have lost 10 people, every one of them to higher-paying jobs. I continue to tell you all, but nothing has been done. Like I said, I am short one right now, so I'm already cutting to my overtime budget, day one of the new fiscal year. I posted for the job at the same time Florence, which posted anywhere from 59,000 to 63,000, and Covington, which posted above in the mid-60s. I'm posting for $45,000. I received no applications. That is not a shock to me. We talked about this, and talked about this, and talked about this, and I've gone back and looked in just about every council meeting or every fireboard meeting over the last three years since I have been chief. I have mentioned this or brought this up in one way, shape, or form. At the strategic planning session meeting back in May, both Chief Haffill and I discussed it with you all and told you all it was gonna be an emergency situation soon. We are there. We are in dire straits. Covington is hiring right now. I have 14 people on my payroll. 11 of the 14 can walk away from this fire department right now and get jobs somewhere else. And no reason I don't say the other three is because they can retire. And no city's gonna hire somebody that's older than retired right now. But I guarantee you, they can retire, wait 30 days, and go back and get a job somewhere else. We are not gonna be able to staff the fire department much longer. I know both, I have met with both city administrators, I know the captains have met with them as well. These guys are here tonight because they care about this department. They can walk away and they don't want to, but they need action from the cities. So, I come to you all tonight with asking you for some action, not saying we're gonna do things, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that. We need some action. These guys need to know that you all have their back and that you all are gonna take care of them. Because in about a month, we're gonna be really hurting. That's about as blunt and as plain as I can put it. We discussed it at the fireboard meeting at length and those cities like, yeah, we'll get back and talk to the city administrators. So, I guess, at this point, my question is to you all, what are we gonna do?
Chief, is there any other, any else you want to speak with, other than that?
No, sir.
Well, first of all, you're an amazing advocate for your team and your team's lucky to have you as their chief. This has obviously been an ongoing conversation we've had in the city hall with Dayton. I know Administrator Fawcett has worked with Administrator Warnock over in Bellevue. We know it's a problem. We do wanna fix it. We've hashed out some ideas and we're serious about it. It's not a, oh, we're gonna do this and then not do it. It's serious. I'll let...
Yeah, so Mr. Warnock and I are putting in, we check all the cities and find exactly what they're paying so we can give, do both our councils a clear idea of where we stand and what we need to be competitive with the other departments. It's clearly an issue and it's, it's basically the existence of this department depends on us being able to pay a wage that's competitive. We all know that. So, I think Bellevue is aware of it, I know Mr. Warnock is, I'm aware of it. I communicated with the city council about this last week in a report about my concerns and that we need to do something. So, I think it's time to do it. We gotta talk to the council about what we do and how we do it. I don't know if we can do it, jump immediately to where we wanna go, but can we get there over a course of time? So, well...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, we know where we need to go, but I don't know if we can get there from A to Z right away. We need to, maybe a couple of years to get there.
Well, Z needs to be quick.
I know.
I have got two people that have already, have come and talked to me, told me they're applying in Covington. That's just two that I know of. And I know that these cities will hire these guys because they've left and they've gone to other places. And Covington's hired like four of ours over the last few years. These 15 or 14 people that are here that work for us right now, I would put them up against anybody. They're well-trained, they know their job, and they bust their butt every day. They put themselves in positions and they deal with stuff every day that most people have no clue about. They could go somewhere else. So, Z needs to happen quick, sir. So, I mean, sooner rather than later.
So, I think what the chief is getting at, that hasn't happened in the last couple of months, which I think probably should happen before the next council meeting or at the next council meeting, is a budget amendment that addresses the salary in some shape or form. Now, maybe it can't be the whole ball of wax, but it's gotta be something that's significant enough to let these guys know that we're behind them, we want a fire department.
I agree.
So, that's where I'm at with it. I think we need a budget amendment by the August council meeting.
Member Volker, are you suggesting we should have a mid-July council meeting?
We could have a mid-July council meeting as well, that would be fine for this specific purpose.
It's serious and we take it serious. Like you said, you've got our back, we're gonna have your back as well. So, wanna make sure that in this interesting economy that is Dayton-Bellevue.
Sure.
We have to have both sides on board. So, that means joint meetings between Bellevue, between now and July, whatever. We can set that up.
Yep, we just have to publicly advertise this.
Well, I mean, meetings with their internal staff.
All internal, even, okay, yeah.
Before, if we wanted to make a budget decision in the middle of July.
We can do that, I mean, that's a regular meeting, the 3rd Tuesday, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
But we should have some buy-in from Bellevue.
Absolutely.
Have you had this conversation with Bellevue?
We have the same exact speech next Wednesday night at their council meeting.
Next Wednesday?
Yes.
So, we probably should start it before next Wednesday?
Well, I mean, I've said this basically at our fireboard meeting, with two of their council members there, like, three weeks ago. So, and I spoke to Mr. Warnock again today, so I have constant contact with both cities.
He and I've talked, he agreed, we both agree it needs to be done. We'll throw it out.
So, why don't we get an internal meeting between Bellevue and Dayton, between now and then, to discuss the financials of it? And then we come back with a proposal. Does that make sense, or...
Yeah.
You make your proposal, we approve or we vote on it?
Yeah.
And then we approve that with the mayor of Bellevue and then we make a decision.
Action goes a long way, that's what we need to do.
In July, then we can approve it and, is it approved already after that? Do we have a second...
Get them into current budget.
Do we have to have a second reading of that?
Yes, by the ordinance.
Alright, so we approve it and then the 1st of August. Is that a fair action?
I mean, if that's... Yes.
Fair.
Yes.
So, that's, Jay, that's one of our top priorities.
Frank and I have been talking about this, I'll reach out to him either tonight or tomorrow, an internal meeting. Mayor, maybe the two mayors and the two city administrators talk about it and see where we wanna go with it and then make a recommendation to the full council, the full councils, both cities.
That's good.
I'll do that. Thank you. Captain Hall actually would like to say something.
If you'll.
Of course, for a minute. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, I appreciate it. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Adam, captain here at Bellevue-Daten. I started here, I started with Bellevue when I was 18 years old. It's my whole adult life, I've been in the fire service and I've served both of these cities for almost 25 years now. And we definitely appreciate that you guys are taking action now. But what I wanna reiterate, 'cause we did meet with the city administrators after the fireboard meeting. You talk about, you know, A to Z and could it be over a couple of years? Anything's doable, but the fear that we have, the guys that work 24-hour shifts is, half and half isn't going to keep these guys from leaking. And it's also not gonna get anybody to apply here. Like I mentioned at our meeting, the closest department that is hiring salary wage is $9,000 difference from us. $4,500 is not going to keep these guys to stay at Bellevue-Daten. But when we did price comparisons, and I know you did that with the other cities, with the guys that have been here, what they're making now, we did get a 3% cost of living raise. The guys that we have here now, with that $9,000 increase that we talked about, which was on the low end of any department, would actually bring these guys, 'cause they looked and saw, what would it take for me to stay here and, you know, tell my wife and my kids I wanna stay at Bellevue-Daten? It was only within $1,000 difference from the city of Covington's pay. $1,000 is pretty comparable for grade, for their grade of job. But $5,500 is a big difference for somebody. So, while we appreciate the action that you guys are gonna take, I am urging, and I know we talked about, it's a huge bite to take, but I brought out the merger study we had back in 2001. And in the first 10 years of this merger, for, there's, weren't here around when this merger happened in 2002. The first 10 years of this merger saved both cities $5 million. And we've, 2%, 3%, so now we're 19 years into this merger, going on 20. So, that $5 million is over $10 million. And we're not asking, even though it's, if you look at the number, it's a large amount of money to do this, but if you look at what we've saved these cities, if we never merged a department or all these other things happened, you know, where would the cities be if they would've had $5 million per city that they would've had to come up with to fund both city fire departments? So, I think coming up with what it takes to keep these guys here. And like I told Mr. Fawcett and I told Mr. Warnock, I can leave today, the chief can, and so can the other two captains, but we don't wanna do that. We are all from here and we don't wanna leave this department in a bad shape. That's not, that's not the people we are and that's not what we wanna do. And we don't wanna do that to the citizens, we don't wanna do that to the councils, we don't wanna do it to anybody. But it's also hard for me to tell my guys that are there 24 hours a day, we'll keep trying, we'll keep trying. You know, you can't do it on hopes and dreams. And I just, I want you to hear it from us, I think the chief does a great job and I talk to him on my off days and he's doing everything he can, but we're the ones out there on that ambulance, on that fire truck. And like I told Mr. Fawcett, we're getting a brand-new ambulance next week. If these guys leave, who's gonna be in the back of that ambulance? 'Cause we're losing all our paramedics. I have a paramedic today, working, that's here for 72 straight hours in this firehouse because we had no paramedics to work today. Do you really want a guy coming to your house that's been here for 72 hours, not been home? That's where we were last night. I just got back from vacation and he called me and he said, "I have no paramedics to work tomorrow. What am I supposed to do?" I said, "Somebody can't go home." And the only medic that wasn't gonna be here longer than that was a guy working 72 hours. That's unacceptable. That's not safe. And I hate to be doom and gloom, but I've been here for 23 years, 25 years, 19 years of this merger. I know what we were. I know where we're at now and I know where we can be. And we're good, but we need your help. We need your help. It has to happen. I appreciate your time.
Good job. Anybody else from the fire department?
No, sir, I think that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Very welcome. City police. Chief Haffill is on PTO, so Detective Baldwin is in his place.
I think everybody has a copy of our monthly report from June. Yeah, that's about all I really have. You guys, any questions off the...
First thing I wanna say is, we had an incident this past week on 600 Block of...
600 Block.
800 Block, 800 Block, right?
No, 600 Block of the...
600 Block Bank.
Yes, sir.
And your team called in other different agencies and you handled it amazingly.
The guys on shift did a great job, surrounding the agencies did a great job, SWAT team. Everything was very professional and nobody got hurt.
Yeah, nobody got hurt. You got your guy and...
Actually, you got three.
You got your three guys.
Yes.
And, yeah, I really appreciate that, thank you, sir. Cassie. Code enforcement.
So, you hear my report? And I also put another report in there for the abandoned and blighted property list that we've sent out certified letters on. We're starting to get those back, so as you can see in the last column, we've had a couple people call, a couple properties have sold, and some are vacant, a lot of them are vacant that are coming back, so. But yeah, so we're moving along on that. We hope to get everything back by the end of this month and then get a hold of the county and then we'll increase the taxes with the county, so. Yeah. Grass is still growing.
Property on 4th Street, we have to get this down here, that.
So, 4th Street property, they capped off the gas line, it's being inspected tomorrow, and they hope to get it down by next week, 6/19. I know that's been a long process because unfortunately with COVID, so all the gas lines and the water lines need to be pulled and capped and they kinda, I think, put those types of things on the bottom of the list. So, it was a little bit longer of a wait than what we wanted. I talked to the owner of the property, plans on building a new house there, so that's good. You wanna talk about today, or...
No, no, we have a report, but yeah, we'll talk about it, so we...
Oh!
That's fine, we'll just talk about that.
That's great.
Big news. So, we've had the property property in the corner of 7th and Dayton, Boone Street, or Dayton Drive, for many years, 701 Boone, and today the city acquired that property for $11,000. And we will be getting about $2,000 of that back in taxes, so net about $9,000. So, that I sort of, it's been at the corner of 7th and Boone Street. Once we get the deed, we've checked it out, it's got serious foundation issues, it's probably gonna be demolished, but it's beginning to putting up that section of the city, which is a gateway into our city and it needs to be more attractive.
That was a big one, that was a big one to check out.
That's what we got, that's one of our top 10. We've got, other things, we're honestly owed as well, but that's really big news. That's number one, that's a number one top ten property.
Yeah, the top 10 list is getting smaller, so we're gonna start moving on down to 12, 13, 14, so. Yeah, it's a work in progress and it's...
There'll always be 10.
It's not a real quick process, but just bear with us and we're working on it, so. Yep. Any questions?
I have a question, yeah. This abandoned, white, white property list, which is great, I love it. Are all of these properties subject to the ordinance with the $500 registration as vacant and blighted?
I don't know that they all are, because if these, under state law, if you don't pay your taxes for three years, that's considered blighted too, so they, you could have a house that's not empty, but it's, you have to pay taxes for three years and that's still considered blighted. So, technically, it's, I don't know, just all empty houses, or occupied, but they haven't paid their taxes. That's one example.
And some of these are occupied.
Oh, some of these are occupied, even though it says abandoned and blighted.
Blighted, blighted is a term of art.
Oh.
So, if you don't pay three, under state law, if you don't pay your taxes for three straight years, that's considered blighted.
Gotcha, gotcha. Understood. 'Cause I noticed on the budget report that there were, I guess, $3,500 we had come in from the vacant property registration. It's only, I don't wanna reflect seven properties.
Right, it's not really there.
Sometimes getting them to pay that is tough, but we, we're working on one person now that has quite a few properties, so we're hopefully gonna, that list is growing. It's slowly growing, but it's growing. And I got the county tax list today, so I'm going through that. But it's kinda strange, a lot of people owe a ton of money in county, but they don't owe any in the city. It's, it's kinda weird how that works, but, so yeah, we're, I mean...
Love it, boy.
Yeah.
That's a deal, that's a good insight.
Thank you. If you have any questions, I mean, you can email me or call anytime, just whatever.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cassie.
Sure.
I ask most certainly, at least, we have public works. Mr. Lucas, for attorney.
That's good news on Cassie's part, but it's gonna be bad news on me. More grass. I didn't get a report in this week. Just, we are getting both sides of 4th Street on the lower end, swept once a week, or once, once a month, and then on the avenue is once a month and priced on the lower 4th, north side of 4th. Our typical day-to-day stuff, preparing a few pot hogs, litter and garbage, garbage cans. Not a whole lot of litter, but we do maintain our garbage cans. We've been checking catch spaces before and after every rain. We removed a tree on 100 Block at 6th Avenue. Dude saved a day on that when they came in and helped us out a little bit and saved us about eight hours of work, I think. And then, as you know, we already got Brooklyn's, and they seed and strolled it today. And so, they'll be looking at one at, I think it's 6:30, 6:45, Brooklyn, I thought much out. They'll probably start on that tomorrow. Park maintenance, clean them every week or every day. And then Sergeant Park, the plumbing is complete up there now, so that's operating great. And then we had our flood wall inspection a couple weeks ago. We won't get the report back for probably till the end of the month. I think most of it went fairly well, I mean, as far as everything I could tell.
Yeah, we also had a meeting with the Army Corps of Engineers, Mike, you and I. And, you know, the developer, they have armor, wants to continue that road and more wants to make sure that they can sign off on anything that touches that flood wall. So, we had a good meeting with them and we've opened up pretty good lines of communication with them, so hopefully they won't get any complaints getting that road fitted.
Mike's helped out a lot.
Yeah, Mike's done a good job, Mike Anger.
And then I have a tree down in, behind the old KFC, which is actually laying on the building. I'm not 100% sure if that's ours or, but I'll probably not have to take it down. That's gonna be a little challenging. And then I had another one go down, I guess, the other night on 10, 1011 4th Street, which is laying across the alley, across the fence, and then into another tree. That one, I have to get, probably Jay, come down and look at it with me. The limb itself's not bad, but it's the limb above it, it's about 70 feet in the air and it's 100% dead. Start cutting on something, I mean, I think...
Crane.
Yeah, I think it could possibly be something like that. And some good news today, it looks like our buddies at Dusty One's gonna take care of us on five storm drains, so.
Including that one on Grand Park?
Yeah. Yeah, they called me back today and they told me it's a go on that one.
Five storm drains, that's great. Nice to see a lot of money.
Yeah, two of them's at bottom with Chateau, or it's three on Chateau that's gonna be replaced. And then one on Second Zen. Yeah, that saved us a lot of money. Other than that, I think I've cut enough grass to last me 10 years.
Water and sun do that, man.
Yeah, and moisture, this humidity.
That's the water part.
Other than that, if anybody's got any questions, it's always good.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. Now, we'd like to open up the audience comments regarding any legislation that will be appearing on tonight's agenda. So, there's only two, things are a second reading and a few first readings, but any comments would be regarding tonight's legislation? So, please approach the stand, state your name and address, state your case.
Mr. Mayor Sarah Shepherd, resident of Dayton and local Squeaky Wheel. I actually rise for a point of clarification regarding the fire department salary line items. The chief mentioned that he's brought this up in May, so I was wondering why the city council did not revisit the fiscal year '22 budget to adjust these before the fiscal year started. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. The fire department and all budgets, well, the fire department budget goes alongside Bellevue's fire department budget. So, there was talks back then regarding that. We agreed on a certain number.
Years that, 3% raise?
3% raise come up across the board for those, which was actually higher than years past, I believe.
That's correct.
And since then, we have been discussing trying to keep up with the Joneses as far as Covington and Newport, which have way bigger budgets than we do. We certainly appreciate the fire department that we have. We have one of the best, if not the best, in Fort Kentucky. And as Mr. Neary and Mr. Volker described, we're intent on keeping that.
A lot of this issue came to a head, I think, at the last fireboard meeting. And so, I don't think if we knew the extent of the issue until that meeting. And the chief's been talking to us about it, but I think we all, I know when we heard what happened at that meeting and really understood this in more seriousness than I think we would've considered before that.
You're welcome, thanks for bringing your concern. Any other audience comments on tonight's legislation? Mr. Hall, state your name, address, please.
My name's Tim Hall, 410 Kenton Street in Dayton, Kentucky. I'm here to talk about, I'm not a very good speaker, so you can already hear my voice, but I'm here to talk about the pickle ban. So, this is my third time for the council, over the years, over my 46 years. And twice, something's been to speak for kids because kids can't get up there. And if, I'll, I hate to write it down because I couldn't remember it, but tonight you're gonna vote to allow a certain dog breed back in the city. Before you do, please think about the consequences that can happen, not that they will, but they can. Think about the senior citizen riding their scooter up to Hansman's to get food. Think about the senior citizen riding their scooter up to Hansman's to get food, think about the kid playing that gill in without a care in the world, think about the jogger burning calories going down the avenue. Now imagine an angry pit bull seeing them and attacking them, and you can, everyone says, well, all dogs bite, all dogs bite, but, um, these are statistics from last year, twenty twenty. There was forty-six dog bite-related deaths in the United States, seventy-two percent of them were from pit bulls, so there, once, once they get on ya, you, you can't get them off, okay? So, and that's from dogs, dogsbite.orgs, uh, dot org, um, okay, and so how would you feel if you overturn this ban, and somebody's child gets attacked? What are you gonna say to them? Sorry, or somebody's grandma, you know, at Spears Court, say a neighbor got a, a pit bull, he got out of the yard, and, and it attacked an old woman going in Spears Court. They can't defend themselves, so are you guys, are you, can you put it on yourself to say, man, I screwed up, or, I mean, that's on you guys, uh, but I think it's a horrible idea, uh, you're fighting something, you're inviting a problem that isn't there right now, so you're inviting more. Uh, if, in my opinion, if, uh, like, you guys get elected not based on, uh, on, on yourselves, but based on, um, just the public think that you're, you're, uh, gonna vote to benefit them, for their public safety, for their welfare. And I don't, I really don't believe it's, it's your guys' position to, uh, to allow it, uh, there's, there's seven thousand, or six or seven thousand people in Dayton now, right Ben, somewhere around there?
Six thousand.
Six thousand people in Dayton, uh, if nothing else, put it on a ballot, a ballot, and, and let the city vote, uh, I think more, I think the, the, the huge majority of the city, uh, would, would say, no, I, I don't want them here, I'm fine without them. Uh, you, you might be talking about fifty people that want the dog, you might be talking about two hundred people that want the dog, but you're not, you're not looking at four thousand people wanting this dog, you know, so. But that was just my opinion, um, you'll give a hundred opinions on it, because it's a big, it's a big subject, but, um, just think about, um, people, people that aren't gonna be able to defend themselves if one of them attacks. I personally have a friend, uh, and if you ever stop up hometowns, you'll see her, she's missing her left calf, and she's missing her right bicep, and the only reason she survived is because it went after her husband, and the only reason he survived is because the cops came and shot it, and shoot it twice, so it, uh.
And that was their dog, wasn't it?
It was their dog.
They pet it.
It was their dog.
Yeah.
If you do get on, uh, dogsbite.org, it breaks everything down, it'll tell you, uh, the ages, you, uh, uh, if, if it was a, a house pet, um, um, the ages of the victims, but these are, these are, um, people that died, not just got bit by a dog, these are people that actually got killed. That's it, thanks for your, uh, for listening.
If you have your comments, you're all. The podium is still open, or anybody who wants to bring up tonight's legislation, anyone? Please. Your first statement, or the podium, please, uh, state your name and address.
I'm Sharon Hicks, I live at three forty Tampa Avenue, and this is my service dog Max. He is on disability, he's my therapy dog for anxiety, and code enforcement had called animal control on me regarding my dog, he is mixed with pit, but he's an American bulldog. Sweetest could be, is contained, I've had him ten years, and I understand that they're gonna have, uh, a vote for the, the breed, and what he said, I agree with to a point. It's the owner's fault too, to begin with, my dogs, I got two, and this is the son of the father, uh, he's a home dog, but he's a very, very, very gentle dog. And code enforcement called animal control on me regarding my dogs being in my yard, and apparently, they've been called on a couple pit bulls around my area, so I'm assuming they're regarding my dogs. Look, I'm at three forty tenth, I've been getting harassed by a code enforcement, somebody around my neighborhood calling on me because I'm trying to burn trees, I'm tired of it. I'm sixty-one on disability, I don't bother nobody. This dog right here, I've had ten years, and I swear, it's like, any one of you sitting in this room right now, he would go up there and kiss you on the mouth and lay on you. But what he was saying about it being dangerous, some are, I will not own a mean dog, I've got ten grandkids, I will not have a mean dog in my house, but I'll be damned if I should be told to get rid of my dog because he's mixed with pit. He's my service dog, he's registered, so what is that gonna tell me if y'all tell me I gotta get rid of him? That my disability and all that don't make any difference to y'all? I don't know. I've had people call on me to come and try to burn trees that I've cut down in my yard, fire departments come up, I don't know how many times, and did what they told me, get a burn barrel, someone called, or maybe you're pissing somebody off, I don't know anybody to piss off. I've talked to three people in my neighborhood, and they live right around me, and I have not a problem with them. So, my dog, my trash, my car being parked in my yard, on my grass, I go around, take pictures of people parking in their grass, not on concrete, not on gravel. I'm just tired of it, I mean, I don't know what I had done to anybody to have, have code enforcement right up and down my street three times a day, in the morning, and waves at me, when my dogs are outside, and the next thing I know, I come home and there's a, a note on my door from animal control. She couldn't have got out of her car and said, here's the ordinance, she couldn't have got out of her car and asked me to explain, I had two other dogs there, one I was watching, all she had to do was talk to me, but she didn't. She went and called animal control, so to me, it's like, if you can't talk to who you're, you know, patrolling, the neighbors, that are paying the taxes and trying to keep their yards clean, and I know around my neighborhood, there's a bunch of houses that are trashy. I don't see nobody, you know, having a bit, and my other neighbors and I talk, so I don't understand why it's on me, and my neighbor across the street, which their trailer's in the driveway, they get called on, I don't get it. This is my service dog, I pay taxes, I got a problem here, I'm not getting rid of it. So, I'm just saying, I've had him ten years, that's like my child, I'm sixty-one, my kids are grown and gone, and my grandkids still stay with me, so this dog right here, that's why I brought him here today, and everybody's like, well, bring him in, he goes where I go. The cop out there almost didn't let me in, he goes where I go. So are you gonna tell me or write me a ticket, or find me, or, or whatever, because I have a service dog? I mean, I kinda like to know the answer to that, I like to know the answer to a lot of my questions here. I mean, and from what I understand about people that have been here fifty-two years, or more, they're still having some issues too. I mean, you know, I just don't get it, I really don't get it, I must have pissed off somebody, they said, who? I really like to know, because if you gotta answer everybody that calls on you, the last call, when the fire department rolled up my street, and I did what the chief said, get two burn barrels, and burn your trash, and burn your bushes, and that's what I did. Somebody called and lied, and told them I was burning plastic, so what do you all do to the people that call and make false reports?
Nothing.
You don't call that person back and say, well, this was a false report, I mean, y'all look at me like I'm crazy, but this is serious to me.
Well, sir, I look like you're crazy, ma'am.
I'm just saying, this is, this is really serious to me, because I don't know why I'm being harassed.
You're asking, you're asking questions.
I'm asking too many questions, I know.
No, you're asking questions about code enforcement, which would be better served the later part of the, of the, the meeting, than we're asking about stuff regarding ordinances that are passing tonight, or first reading.
Well, you just said anything on the agenda, so that's why I came up here and he was talking.
Dogs are on the agenda, code enforcement is not.
I just heard.
But it's part of, it's, it's part of it, I'd like to thank you for coming, uh, I'm the one that even brought this legislation forward, because I have heard stories about people having trouble like you. For honestly, for two years prior, when I was on council, I didn't hear a blip about pit bulls being enforced at all, and then I heard a story of someone that had a cane corso puppy, and it was under subject for being removed, because they didn't believe that, they had to get a DNA test and all of that. The whole point of bringing this up tonight is to allow your dog, to allow anyone that has a family dog, that is not vicious, to hold on to their dog, so I applaud you for standing up, we definitely care, we definitely love your little baby, um, so that will be enforced, like, I mean, that will be addressed.
I do have a question, it's like, so I heard one of the police officers in Dayton has a pit bull breed, but he's still a police officer, and he still lives here, so why would you allow him?
Well, I, I think just, just to probably.
You know what I'm saying, I'm, I'm just asking the question.
I think your, your, your points are being heard, we're not just staring at you, because there's a lot of questions, like you said, but, uh, a little bit later in this meeting, we're gonna make a vote on that, and that vote will determine whether this ban is lifted. You have a chance to speak at the end of the meeting, if you would like to as well, um, I, the reason I actually became on council was because of my code enforcement issues, and I was under the gun, and for no reason, and I've been fighting against it as well, so you have people on your side, so just.
Okay, well, that's nice to know, I mean, seriously, I felt like I was by myself.
No, you're not, you're not.
Every time I turned around.
You're not.
And there was a note on my door, or there was a letter in the mail saying you'll be subject to a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fine, and they, you know, I'm just like.
You're understood, and you're, I mean, that's, that's literally why I'm here, so.
What's your name?
Scotch.
Yeah, I'm Scotch.
Nice to meet you.
Okay, I appreciate it.
But thank you for coming out.
Come on, Max, let's go. Do this one.
Good boy.
Good to share, thank you, Max.
Come on.
Mister.
The podium is.
I just have a point of clarification, is there a breed ban, is there any other breed that's banned outside of American terrier?
Oh, ma'am.
It's actually currently just pit bull, not even American Staffordshire terrier.
Well, Terrier Bicker comes as a pit bull, that comes up on a D and H test.
The podium is still open for anybody who'd like to discuss this evening's legislation. State your name, address.
Uh, yes, Todd Blevins, uh, I'm actually not a resident of Dayton, but happy to give you my regiment address if, uh, if you'd like, um, six five two Lever Place. I didn't intend on speaking tonight, uh, because, uh, those of you on council heard my comments last blunt, but, uh, following the comments that you heard, I just wanted to briefly, um, get up and, uh, make a couple of points. The first is that, as you've seen made manifest tonight, opinions on both sides of the issue of breed bans are, are very, very high, and I think those should be addressed sincerely and methodically. I don't think Mister Hall is necessarily wrong in his own convictions, and I don't think, uh, Sharon, I didn't catch her last name, she's, I don't think she's wrong in her convictions either, but I think when you have opinions raised to such a high pitch, that's when you have to come back to the facts. And I feel that my role to, here tonight, as it was last month, is to try to speak to the facts, and the fact is that, as Mister Hall had said, uh, these events can happen, or could, or may, but in reality, when you see these sorts of bans repealed, they don't. They, they simply don't, uh, wind up in a cascade of events as, uh, some opponents often fear.
And could you tell the audience who you're with?
Uh, yes, sir, I'm sorry, I'm with the Humane Society of the United States, I'm the Kentucky State Director. And just briefly, I, uh, as I mentioned last month, uh, thank you, Councilman, for that reminder, I, I am with the Humane Society, but we're certainly not the only organization that, uh, opposes these sorts of breed-specific bans. I had sent Mister Fawcett a list of some of the organizations across the country that range from the American Veterinary Medical Association, the American Count Club, the National Animal Care and Control Association, uh, and so on and so forth. A lot of those groups don't often align on issues, but on this issue, they do, simply because the research and the facts have shown that these are ineffective. As the, as the Councilman alluded to, uh, by potentially repealing the ban, you are not then, uh, opening the doors to quote-unquote vicious dogs in the city of Dayton. Uh, if a dog is deemed vicious, it can still be deemed as such, this just simply allows, uh, residents like, uh, Sharon to, uh, have a pit, simply have a pit bull within the city limits. And as I mentioned last month, a lot, pardon me, Councilman.
Well, I just had a question.
Yes, sir.
How does a dog get deemed vicious?
How does a dog get deemed vicious?
Right.
It's after, uh, it depends on your city, but oftentimes, it's after some sort of aggressive, yeah.
Okay, this is what I want to get at, that's right.
So, um, pardon me, I lost my train of thought there, Councilman, uh, I did want to point out in, in Sharon's case, uh, although I think that's certainly a, a difficult story to hear, it's hard to fault code enforcement on that issue, I won't speak to her other issues about barrels and trees and such, but on that issue, uh, one can make the argument that code enforcement, or indeed law enforcement, is simply just following the ordinance that's on the books, and they have no other choice. And again, by repealing that ban, you take that issue off the table. And to, to a point Mister Hall had made about, if you ask the citizens of Dayton what they think about it, uh, this is probably not my place to mention this, but I happen to notice that there's a Facebook group called the Dayton Kentucky Buzz, and there was a, a resident, um, I think named Miss Robinson, that posed a question in that group that said, uh, if you are in favor of repealing the ban, indicate with this symbol, if you are against, indicate with this symbol, and the last time I checked, it was a hundred and eighteen were in favor of repealing, and zero for, for, for maintaining. So, again, I, I think, uh, no matter if you look at it from a national perspective or a local perspective, you'll see where the majority of folks and opinions lie. So, thank you, Mayor, for indulging me, I just, uh, wanted to take a moment, and I'm happy to answer any questions Councilmen have.
Does anybody have any questions for Mister Blevins?
I actually do, in, in this particular case, I'm presuming that her dog is certified as a service dog.
Uh, that's what it sounds like, yes, sir.
In communities, and there are nine hundred in some communities, and some counties even, that still have a pit bull ban, or multiple breed ban, in a case like hers, if it's a certified service dog, are they exempt from any kind of bans like that?
Uh, I, I probably couldn't speak directly to Dayton's, um, but apparently by some mechanism, she was able to obtain that certification and have the dog within the city limits. Uh, I'm not sure what that means going forward for her, if the ban stays in place, I'm not sure if law enforcement would feel the need to check the certification or something to that effect.
So with other communities or counties in Kentucky that have these cases, you've not run across that issue?
I have never run across that issue.
You have never run across that issue where a banned breed is certified as a service dog?
Uh, I haven't, Councilman, to tell you the truth.
I was just wondering legally what the.
Yeah, and I'm not dancing around the question, I honestly just haven't seen that before, um, so, hope that helps.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Mister Blevins? This is a really nice storm room, and you see everybody going this to the other. One second, Mr. Hall, does any council have any questions for Mister Blevins? Any, if you're not asked, does anybody from, uh, audience have questions for Mister Blevins, or first statements?
I've got a statement.
You can make a statement, ma'am.
Okay, I bear some responsibility for what we call the pit bull ban, I don't know what year it was, many years ago, we had police officers come to us and tell us that drugs were a big issue in town, as in most towns, and they would always be greeted at the door by a pit bull, and that was their weapon of choice. That is why we instituted that, I don't know if that's the pro, the same issue going on now, but that was the reason for that. Of course, now, as I hear people that have pit bulls, and we know some, or people say, I know somebody's got one, obviously, it's not being enforced, so sometimes I think it's better just to turn your head and just forget about it all.
So, Miss Vaulter, you, you were on the, uh, council that originally started that?
Yeah, and I couldn't tell you what year it was.
Okay.
Two thousand and six.
How'd you know that, ma'am?
No issue, but times are changing, so. And it was for the safety of the citizens and the police force, more than anything.
Can I say something?
Uh, you're a councilwoman.
I don't know, yeah, but, um, that, this is a story that I've heard from several people, but that's why this ban was initiated at that time, that it was perceived to be a threat for the police department, um, definitely when people wanted to keep the police department safe in this capacity easily. We had a committee on Joe's request, and, um, we interviewed. safe in this capacity easily. We had a committee on Joe's request and, um, we interviewed Chief Hathfield, who I was really kind of surprised because I thought, okay, here we go. Because until then, it had been, um, I was very surprised at how many organizations were not in favor of pit bull legislation, of, um, how many people that work here, including the animal control person, was not in favor of keeping that, the breed-specific legislation. But I thought, okay, we're talking to the police now. But he said we haven't had any issues. Um, it's no longer an issue if it ever has been. Um, he said that he knew, um, he knew, he knows they're, um, in Dayton. And he said, in fact, he runs on the flood wall and he said that, um, some people at the Tapestry House. He said that he's uncomfortable with the ban. He said, you guys could just repeal it and see how, I mean, he was really very casual about it because he has no issues. And he said that, um, he really dislikes having to come in and remove a family dog from the house, um, purely because that dog is perceived to be a pit bull. It actually, um, there's a lot of trouble with the DNA test. So mostly Terry has to work with visual, does it look like a pit bull? And he really, he said it is not good when you come to a house and take a pit bull away from a family. So I thought with me, his, his experiences and comment had a lot of weight. I mean, he really had nothing possible to say about this ban, but I did say, well, what, is it such a big deal? He didn't know. He said it's before my time. I don't know.
He wasn't in the department back then.
Yeah, it's like it's not a thing.
Perhaps today, everybody's packing guns, so...
I don't know.
Who needs a dog?
I don't know. Yeah.
Now, can we put Officer Marksberry on the spot back here in the corner?
Hold on a second.
Mayor, there's, there seems to be somebody in distress. Okay, I'll be out here. Will this open up?
I, I don't believe you through that, Mr. Boulter. I hear a bunch of fire.
Oh, it's cold. It's a little...
Oh, it's okay.
Oh, it's cat.
I think the cat wants to speak in the podium.
It's the perfect time.
Bring the cat's name. I want to hear Mrs. Cardunitz and where she lives.
I was gonna say, I'm sorry, sir, but I'm gonna throw you on the spot.
Mr. Marksberry?
You're obviously out and about. I know you're our canine handler, but you're night shift. Is that correct?
Second, five p.m. to three a.m.
You know what drugs we have? Do you come across some pit bulls? Have there been any issues? I mean, I don't know how long you've been here. You can state whatever.
I've been here for seven years. I've been an officer for, uh, twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, I also run a kennel business that many people know. And I've housed or babysat, um, multiple pit bulls, if that's what you're asking. Um, I personally have never had a, uh, negative experience, uh, even with, uh, babysitting, uh, or dog sitting, uh, customers, uh, you know, pets, uh, that don't know me from Adam. Uh, I've been able to, you know, put them on a, a leash and do what I need to do and walk them and things of that nature. So it's never been a personal, uh, issue for me. Uh, out here in the city, it can get very challenging to determine, uh, based on the appearance of a dog only what I know that there might be some dogs that have, are mixed, uh, that might have pit bull in them. But then again, I'm not a, a DNA expert or any of that.
But like dog and tax, has there been any issues that you're...
By pit bulls? Uh, no. Since I've been here for seven years.
Okay, let's say you're coming to bust down some of drugs.
Yes, I believe, uh, Chief Hathfield did look into how many bites he's had here recently, you know? Not from pit bulls.
But even going into a home for drugs or whatever, have you guys came across anything?
In my twenty-four years, I've also worked undercover, uh, for the strike force. Um, I, we never encountered, uh, a pit bull. We've encountered, encountered the more often ankle biters, if you will.
Okay, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but you're out there every day. I mean, you're gonna know.
Correct.
What you see, what...
Plus, Mr. Marksberry is well-versed in animals and canines, so I appreciate your thoughts. We're, we're lucky to have you because our other cities do not. You know, we're lucky to have a canine expert on our team. Other cities do not. So thank you very much for your thoughts.
You're welcome. I actually appreciate the opportunity you guys gave me to do it at the beginning, so...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Boulter's raising his finger. Looks like he might want to approach the stand.
Unfortunately, I haven't heard it. I don't want to say unfortunately, but I've been here since ninety-six, so I remember, you know, six when this ban came about. And that was a period of time when we were very, very active. I mean, we're active now, but nowhere near what we were then. Uh, one of the issues that we have is, is determining if it is a pit bull or not. I honestly have come on several calls and, I don't know, I get this dog coming up when he's petted and people are telling me it's a pit bull and I have no clue because we, we're not, you know, trained in detection.
DNA veterinaries?
Please?
You're not DNA veterinarian?
That's right.
That wasn't brought up in the academy?
Right. Never had it. But just an insight, you know, I mean, we go to several houses or we've had reports and we just pull them out, you know? And that's where, of course, the moment comes in and actually, let's be honest, definitely because it involves the city ordinance. I, I do remember in those six, we were very busy and we did have several moments where we did search warrants and we actually was getting bit by a vicious dog. But then again, that falls on the owner who trains that dog to be that way.
You could have been bit by a vicious gun.
Oh. But more people were more apt to, to sip it off of us back then, so...
I hope none of the potatoes are happy.
No, sure. But just a little insight, I mean, you know, I mean, we, from what I understood, talking to Chief Hathfield, uh, who I've talked to, we've had no recent incidents over the last few years.
Thank you very much for your, your presentation. The podium is open for anybody who'd like to speak with the council regarding tonight's legislation.
I, I just have something else I need to add to what I said. Um, if, I know there are, are things on the books already for muzzles for certain breeds. Is that being enforced?
I don't want to answer that.
I think that's for dangerous. I think they're, that's on the dangerous dogs.
So how do you deem a dangerous dog before it maules somebody?
Usually it's after a day.
Exactly. So we have...
Or lunge the fence.
What's that?
I read that. It's a, or lunge a fence or...
Yeah, right.
I've got, I've got another, I've got another question pulled up, actually.
Would you read it? A dangerous dog would...
A dangerous animal. Any animal which constitutes a physical threat to human beings or domestic animals by virtue of a known or displayed propensity to endanger by pursuing, wounding, or attacking any other da, domestic animal or human being, whether or not such dangerous animal bears any license tag required by state law. Exceptions, any animal shall not be deemed dangerous if it bites, attacks, or menaces anyone assaulting its owner or any other person or animal that has to amend or abused it, or is acting in self-defense or an attack on a person, is protecting or defending its young or domestic animal, uh, any animal trained under or harbor for purpose primarily or in part of animal fighting, any animal which has been trained to attack persons independently or upon, this, I'm sorry, the two and three, which is any animal trained under or harbor for purpose or primarily in part of an animal fighting, or any animal which has been trained to attack persons independently or upon oral command.
So there again, anybody can walk, uh, what appears to be a big vicious dog without the muzzle unless they have mauled somebody or bitten somebody.
Or threatened.
So that, Mayor, we'll throw that out, because that's, I can see a two or three-year-old walking down the street head level with, with a pit who may not be raised in a good household. It's just my opinion.
Anybody have comments regarding any upcoming legislation tonight? The podium matures. We're gonna close the podium for upcoming legislation in five, four, three, two. Yeah, the podium is closed. Thank you very much. I do want to, uh, note a, uh, special visit tonight, uh, with Mr. Parsons, uh, Jim Parsons. He's with K and P Law. Uh, Mr. Parsons, thank you very much for, uh, being with us tonight. Uh, he's got, uh, what's that? The, the first reading of twenty-twenty-one number twenty Romeo, the industrial build, the I B R, IRB, industrial building revenue bond, Tapestry on the River Project is coming up tonight. So I, I believe he had a few comments he wanted to make to council regarding this, or you're asking any questions you might have?
Yeah, I, I can, whenever you're ready to take that on, I'll be glad to answer questions relative to that. All we're simply doing is, the Tapestry project is being sold to a new entity, and we're simply just authorizing the assignment of that to a new entity. There are gonna be some really good, I think, pretty good benefits to the city, uh, based upon that because as a result of the sale, there'll be increased value. Your pilot payments are based upon, uh, the actual value, uh, assessed by the P V A and the documents we've got to draft. And they're, will be part of the closing, will actually require the seller and buyers to report just like they would in the, the actual sale price. So next year, your value should be pretty significantly higher for purposes of taxes. Just for informational purposes, here, the IRBs you've been doing on the, in Manhattan Harbor, uh, do not, they're, the city gets a hundred percent payment. So there's no incentive, uh, from the city directly on any of those things. We just be aware of that. So I'm glad to answer your questions. Uh, if you have questions...
Should we do that now before we...
Yeah. What am I doing now?
I, in the interest of Mr. Parsons' time.
That's fine. They're not, they can answer questions if they come up and it makes sense.
All right, good, good. Fawcett makes sense to do it. Uh, Mr. Ledger, would you please read twenty-twenty-one number twenty Romeo?
Order twenty-twenty-one number twenty R. An order of the City Council of the City of Dayton, Kentucky, authorizing the execution of a First Amendment to the trust indenture and amended and reinstated Home Office payment agreement that consent to the assignment and assumption of the agreement in lieu of taxes and other bond, and other bond documents related to the thirty-one million, five-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand, City of Dayton, Kentucky, arrest, industrial building revenue bond series twenty-eight, Tapestry on the River Project, to facilitate the transfer and assignment of a lease, the project and the bonds from C I P fourteen, A P I Manhattan Harbor L L C, a Delaware limited liability company, to C F Riverview Multifamily D S T, a Delaware statutory trust, authorizing the execution of a, a leasehold mortgage with a free joiner and related documents in accordance therewith and taking other actions in furtherance thereof. It's a resolution.
So just to follow up with what, um, Parfum said is that we work with the school district to make sure that the value of this property, as it's currently assessed, is known to us so that we can, the full value of our pilot payment, just twenty percent. Um, and so that's not been done in the past, but we've made sure that it's done. And this will probably contain it in the future so we are aware and fully what the value is and what your title is.
Basically, Dayton benefits greatly, uh, with the value of the building moving from thirty-five to whatever it is, the sale value. Uh, that's up to us to accept that as sale or yawn. So that's a resolution order. Do I have a, any motions to accept twenty-twenty-one number twenty Romeo?
No, this is a resolution.
Resolution.
I'll make the motion to approve twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one, number twenty R.
Do I have a second?
So moved.
Remember, Neary made a motion, then Volter made a second. That opens it up to comments, so that's an opportunity for your council to ask Mr. Parsons if any questions they may have regarding this, this sale or, or taxes.
So, Mr. Parsons, this is simply, uh, to put it in layman's terms, one company is selling the building to another at an increased price of what its current value is, which is incidental. Um, and they are also assigning the IRBs, the, uh, industrial revenue bonds that we issued, are going to be changed unto the new owners, correct?
That's correct.
That is the only thing that's happening.
That is the only thing that's happening here. Uh, the only major difference, though, with the assignment that the city is approving on the pilot agreement will mandate that the buyer and seller at the closing certify the value and certify the purchase price. And so that'll be also reported to the P V A relative to that. But that is exactly what's happening here. It's just, uh, we're not extending the term of the bonds, we're not extending, expanding anything relative to that. It's just simply one entity is buying that property, Tapestry on the River. Uh, and, uh, the, the new entity has significant experience, uh, relative to owning and operating property. They're a major company, the Fox Corporation.
Thanks for that clarification. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Does any other council member like to address Mr. Parsons?
Just thank you. He's, he's being well-paid. Thank you.
All right. So we have a motion, we have a second, we have comments. Comments are closing in three, two, one. Comments are closed. Uh, kind of roll call, please, Ms. Ledger.
Member Lovins?
Aye.
Member Basler?
Aye.
Member Volter?
Aye.
Member Neary?
Aye.
Member Neiman?
Aye.
Member Kelly?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your attention.
Yep.
Parsons, you have a good evening, sir. Uh, so, going back to the regular order of the agenda, we'll go to the second reading. Uh, the second reading of twenty-twenty-one number eight. Now, this is the ordinance amending the number of dogs allowed in a household. Is that...
City of Dayton, Kentucky, ordinance number twenty-twenty-one, number eight. An ordinance amending section ninety-one point oh-four of City of Dayton Code of Ordinances to increase the number of dogs allowed in a household from three to two. And it keeps the number of cats at the same. It's still two. Oh, I'm sorry.
You said from, yeah, it's two to three.
From two to three. Sorry. Sorry.
So the members, the orders have been read. Do I have a motion to accept twenty-twenty-one number eight?
I'll make that motion.
Member Basler's made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Member Lovins. That opens a supper discussion between council. Remember, discussion, remember, during twenty-twenty-one number eight?
Sure.
Hey, Jeff, go for it.
So my first, uh, point of order is I would like someone to tell me how this benefits the community. Let's say someone has three dogs right now. They don't have to give away one of their dogs. They're in violation of the current ordinance. That is correct. That's why I'm trying to change it. So how does that benefit the community? Because they don't have to give away their dogs. Okay. So because someone's violating the current ordinance... You know, not, not, not a lot of us are blessed with the ability to have children and a lot of people have pets as their children. I have, I have neighbors, I have people that, that is their children. Am I gonna limit someone from having kids? I'm not giving them kids. I'm giving them... That's what I am. This is my point, this is my point of argument. It's, the benefit is that we are not saying no to people. Let's say you have one senior dog, a middle dog, and let's say you want to have a puppy to bring it into this fold so that, you know, this middle dog wouldn't want to be affected by the loss of another dog. Are we gonna say no, that you can't have that puppy? I think two dogs per household is... Do you have a dog, sir? Uh, I had dogs for thirty years. So you don't have many right now? Not currently now. Okay. But I had dogs for thirty years. Okay. Um, my, my children have dogs. Uh, and I love dogs. I'm just trying to figure out how this benefits the community as a whole because I'm looking every day. I don't get on social media a lot, but every day you can get on all the social media sites in Dayton. And do you know what you see? Yes. You see dogs running loose in the city. I also see cats running loose. I'm just telling you, you see dogs running loose in the city. And that's four or five every day. That's not counting the ones that aren't posted on social media. But if you allow three dogs, gonna maybe cross a... I'm not talking about dogs.
I'm not talking about dogs.
I mean, there are neighbors that allow three dogs as well, so, and we're Dayton's private department as well.
With more dogs in the city, you're going to get more barking dog complaints. You're going to get more dogs running the city streets. You're going to get more dogs doing their business on the city streets and parks. You're going to get more possible dog bites. Those are the things that are happening. People abandon dogs and they send them to shelters for mainly a couple of reasons. They don't realize the responsibility of caring for a dog, nor the cost. So the cost, the average cost of caring for a dog annually is about 1,200 bucks. That includes food, shelter, accessories, debt business, if people take their dogs to the vet. That's what that includes. Doesn't include medicine or other special things. So, you know, when people get in a bind, they usually, you know, get rid of the dog. They can't afford it, they take it to the shelter, they drop it off. Our shelters are full, you know? I don't see an advantage, other than some people already have three dogs. They're violating our current ordinance. And we're saying, gee, they're violating our current ordinance, let's go ahead and let them keep those dogs. So I guess maybe next year we have four dogs, five dogs.
Well, if you're talking economics of this, no, you were, you were talking about the price and how it affects people's behavior and ability to take care of their dogs.
That's true.
Three Chihuahuas, does that equal one Labrador? I mean, you're feeding it the same amount as one dog. So like, the size of matter would come into effect during your budget. Fact of the matter is, people with two dogs know it's a huge responsibility. If I get a third dog, no. You know why? Because I don't want to pick up more crap in my yard, I don't want to have more responsibility right now. But in the future, if I wanted to get that puppy when one of my dogs was getting ready to die, I'd want that ability. I mean, it's a personal choice and freedom, I don't know why we would take that away from someone.
And the dog's not on a leash, the dog, I mean, that's going to fall back on the owner. I mean, that's like trying to fix bad kids out here.
Doesn't fall back on you.
I mean, I've got a dog getting ready to go down, and I've got two dogs. It hurts when you hurt, when you lose one.
With a lack of respect, this is council discussion.
I'm just with that.
I see only liability.
I appreciate your opinion.
But what you're saying is, and this is beyond me, because I always thought that as council members and people in city government, we are supposed to support our ordinances and laws, regardless of whether we agree with them or not.
So you don't agree with changing any of our ordinances that are on the books?
I didn't say, I didn't say, I didn't say that. I said if they're currently on the books, then we should support them, or... Yeah, you can make a change, yeah. But what I'm hearing people saying is, I know people are violating them, but I'm not going to support that ordinance because I don't agree with it. That's what I'm hearing you say.
Well, you're not hearing me correctly.
I thought you said you got people that have three dogs, you know a lot of people that have...
I do, and I went door to door with this pit bull thing, that see how many dogs were in people's homes, and people are like, oh, I didn't, when you moved to Dayton, did you read the rule book? Do you want these Tapestry people that have three Chihuahuas to leave? Like, their apartment let them in. Is it up to you, to us, to be like, you guys, sorry, you gotta get, pick one of them, you're getting rid of one of your dogs?
Where do you stop it, though?
Three, we're doing it at three.
But why not four?
You want to do it to four, let's do it to four.
I mean, you know, I'm just saying, where do you stop it? You're making, you want to make this change based on people that are violating the current ordinance?
No, people that want a third dog, I'm not saying that.
Oh, you're saying they don't have three dogs now?
What are you talking about, Jack? Seriously, I was just going to like, let it go to vote, because there's no point in this conversation.
You knew people that had three dogs, and you didn't want to have to tell them they have to get rid of one?
That is one case, yeah.
One case, okay.
No, that is one example.
I will say, I do know multiple people that have three dogs, and I am on council, just like I did not know I had to register my dog with the city. Unless you're on council or you come to these meetings, we have so many ordinances, I don't know how anyone who moved in would know. And again, I just joined council and I... What, two? But I'm just saying, two months ago, I did not know there was a $25 dog pack fee. I own two dogs, so I brought them a roll for a while.
I'd like to say that when we moved here seven years ago, I had one dog and Doug had three dogs. And I didn't know anything about it, we had four dogs for years, no licenses either. And I only learned about both laws after they were dead and we, you know, got them caught. But I think that, I think that if it had been between taking that house and getting rid of one of those dogs, we're not getting rid of one of those dogs. And we can take care of our dogs, they are perfectly, wonderfully happy up there, and that was a decision we made. You know, we wouldn't have moved in a place that was too tiny for four dogs, but anyway, so that's four. And I guess even that I wouldn't even consider myself like, a big dog person. It's four kind of sounds like a lot, but it's not a lot when you have them. Anyway, you also said that, you said there's dog poop everywhere in bites, and this is what is happening.
No, I didn't say that.
You didn't? You said that's what's happening.
Here's what I said. I said if you increase dogs, you increase the possibility of more dog bites, yeah, dogs going more on the streets and the parks, more dogs running in the city, and more barking dog complaints. Just by numbers.
Okay, but because we were doing a committee report for the pit bull ordinance, I talked a lot to Terry Baker, and she said, when she started 19 years ago, Dayton was thought of as really awful, running with dogs, it was a big problem, this and whatever. And she said, no. I said, now? And she said, no, Dayton is absolutely fine.
Because we have these ordinances.
Between two and three dogs, does it all help to break loose?
May I have the floor, sir? I don't mean to interrupt that, but we have ordinances. Whether or not they're being followed is not the question, that's enforced by the administration.
I'm not suggesting that anyone does not follow the current ordinance, although it's very easy to be ignorant of those ordinances.
And almost every urban community, Mr. Edmondson, you can vouch for this, almost every urban community has laws on the books, usually saying the number of pets, because it's an urban community, and in many cases breed specific bans, or vicious dog ordinances or whatever. We all live too close together, most of us. Most of the city has maybe 350 square feet in the backyard. Just I'll use your house as an example, because pretty much everything from 7th Avenue North is small lots.
I have a pretty big backyard, I spook two Yorkie poos.
My concern is...
They could throw on a third one, I would, I mean, I know the responsibilities, my yard's gated, my dogs are never on, I mean, off of the leash when I do walk them, I pick up my dog poo. But having three dogs, I mean, it wouldn't change anything. But I don't leave my dogs out at night, I don't, I don't have them crazy. I mean, my dogs do yap because of the Yorkie poos, but...
But I'll go back to what Jeff said, why three, why not seven? Why not have any limit? The reason we have a limit on is because we are primarily an urban community, okay? We don't have a city. And the lots are very small, and the yard space is very small. What about the neighbors, okay? I mean, everybody says, oh, I want to, this is what I want. I want to go 90 miles an hour down 6th Avenue with no stop signs, but we put up stop signs and speed limits to protect the neighborhood. And we've got people that have lived in their homes for their whole life, that have houses on both sides and in many cases, no alleys, somebody right behind them. I mean, what's that going to smell like in the summer? And there are responsible dog owners, I don't deny that. But how do you legislate the ones that aren't responsible? We don't have, what about a multi-family house?
So at one point, when I was researching this and putting together the ordinance, there's a, a lot of times ordinances are drafted from other communities years together, and we're all guilty of it, we find an ordinance, we try to incorporate it in as best we can. There's an ordinance that you have that says that every time that a dog touches a property owner's property, you have to have permission from the property owner. It's courtesy to walk around the bag and collect, you know, if something happens to the next door neighbor, whatever the case is, but that ordinance is on books. It's virtually impossible to enforce in an urban city. Now, I see that in other areas as well, larger parcels, and it's a courtesy ordinance. I've never seen it as a prosecutor in 10 years, never seen someone bring it up to the human's attention. The issue that this council has to decide is not only having an ordinance, but then enforceability. So when you look at that, there's ordinances every day on here that we can certainly even cite somewhere for. It's impractical to think that a dog's going to go down the street, right, and not use the yard without getting permission, knocking on the door. It's not just one permission, it's every time they utilize it. So it's difficult as a legislator, and you guys are legislators, and this is your grace, you have to decide what's important, but just make sure we can figure out how to enforce it too, that's all.
Well, my point is, not necessarily being out in public, okay? My point is, my next door neighbor has three dogs, 400 square feet, I can't go out on my porch anymore, either because of the smell, especially at this time of year, or the barking or whatever. I mean, they have a right to sit, they have a right to be comfortable in their home. Now, if we could change this ordinance...
Is it true, you do have a neighbor?
Let's be theoretical on this, because there are plenty of people, you can do that? There are plenty of people in town, probably three quarters of our population that is going to be affected by this. What, it says three per housing unit. What about these multifamilies in town that have like, four units? Does that mean they have 12, they're allowed to have 12 dogs in there?
Yeah.
Yeah, it does. The best comment I heard on this, because we've all solicited comments from John Q Public over the past couple months, best comment I heard was, if you want a herd, buy a farm. If we allow the density of dogs, we're presuming that everybody would be good neighbors and responsible dog owners, but that doesn't work. What's the fallback for law enforcement? If someone calls and says, hey, this is a mess in the next door neighbor's yard? Maybe if we had legislation that allowed a maximum of X pound of dog for every X square feet of backyard, that'd be more fair to the neighbors. But you can't do that. Allowing three dogs per housing unit opens up the next argument, why not a bunch of them? The second reason is, pretty much everybody has two arms. And when you're walking your dogs with two leashes, in many cases, I have seen people that can't even control one, but want two. You put a third one on there and they're going all different directions. We want to be a walkable, safe community. Three dogs is tough to manage, even for somebody... Now, I'm not talking about Yorkies or 20-pound dogs or anything, I'm talking about bigger dogs. We're too close together, we're not an urban community, or we're not a suburban community, we are an urban community. I think we have to respect what the neighbor, how it affects the neighbors. So I'm only going to be a few people that want this, and are going to take advantage of having three dogs. And I've had dogs almost my whole life, I understand, I would love to have seven of them, I'm kind of glad there's this ordinance. My wife is, I know. But it's a want, not a need. And the neighbors need to be able to enjoy their homes and their backyards. Just because you want to have three dogs, or bigger dogs, or whatever, I don't think that balances out very well. I think it'd have a real negative impact on our neighborhoods. So on this one, I gotta vote no on this one.
Well, let's take it to vote, let's quit talking about it, because we're going to keep talking in circles about all of this, and none of our minds are going to get changed. So, let's go and do this.
Let's go and do this. We already had a motion by Member Basler and Member Lovins to first and second. We open up the comments, do we have any other comments regarding this ordinance?
I think that there's an assumption maybe that we change this ordinance and then there's just this flood of dogs, I don't see that happening. And I think it's reasonable, if you live here for years and you like dogs and you want to have dogs, that one's old. Like, when we moved in, you know, all our dogs were old. So I was like a geriatric dog nurse for like, two years, but you know, they all finally passed away. But a lot of times you do, and one's old, and too old for the other one. So you kind of are like, moving them in and out. And I don't, I don't think that, I don't think it's unreasonable to have three dogs. We don't want a farm.
I think, you know, by that same, making those same assumptions, I think you're making the assumption that everybody's going to take care of their dogs. Everybody's going to feed them properly, everybody's going to board them properly, take them to the vet, everybody's going to clean out bathrooms, as Joe said, that doesn't happen. You're making that assumption.
Okay, so what if that doesn't happen? They call in, they call them in the place, or they're...
So honestly, I think all these dog ordinances are all, almost all unenforceable, almost all. Have we ever, have we ever had anybody get a ticket or a fine?
The woman who brought her dog in was being harassed for having her...
That was the pit bull ban, but I'm just asking, have we ever had anybody get a fine or a ticket for a dog not being on a leash?
Who's going to answer that question?
Well, I can, I don't know of any. I've been here a long time, I don't know of any.
You need to call Terry Baker.
I called Terry Baker, I talked to her. She, she has, I believe she said, and I asked her, I said, do you respond to any dog complaints in Dayton? She said, it depends. Some months I might have three or four, some months I might have 20 to 30. That's, those are her words.
Exactly, her words.
But, you know, as far as writing tickets or fines, I know of none. I mean, almost all these things are unenforceable. Yeah, you can call and say, my neighbor's yard stinks, and Cassie might come, or somebody might come and say, clean that up. And they may clean it up, or they may take a lot of cleaning up, but then two weeks later, guess what?
But if they don't, they get, they get fined. That's how code enforcement works.
Have you fined anybody for dog abuse?
I have, actually.
Okay. There we go, so we have.
I have, and I also, I mean, just, I did get, Tommy sent me, I guess, it's been a while back, an animal running loose, I guess he had gotten called several times, so I'd sent them a notice. I try not to get too involved, because I try to, or, you know, if they call for a pit bull or anything, I send those all directly to Terry. I'm not going to be the deciding factor on what kind of dog it is. Which is what happened to the lady that was here earlier. I got a complaint that she had four pit bulls, I immediately called Terry to center, to center out there, so... Because I'm not animal control, I don't know what a, you know, a pit bull is from a drugstore.
And one of the greatest things about Dayton is people don't call animal control, because we post a picture of that loose dog on Facebook, and people are like, I got your dog, and they're like, I'll come get it. And then it all gets resolved. It's like, that's one great thing about Dayton, is we're all looking out for each other, so...
And I think with COVID too, I think the animal shelters are getting a little particular on what Terry, you know, what she can bring, she was finding the loose animal, they wanted to try to find, you know, where it goes, and things like that. So I think with COVID, things got a little dicey with her, so she, yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, so we've had a motion, we've had a second, we've had comments for a while now. Do we have any other comments regarding dogs, dogs, dogs?
None on this one.
Alright, I figured we'd save that for the next. Alright, so the motion for the second, we're going to vote three, two, one, Ms. Ledger. Roll call, please.
Member Basler?
Yes.
Member Volter?
No.
Member Neary?
No.
Member Neiman?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Lovins?
Yes.
So I have it, you can now have three dogs. Moving right along. We have an ordinance amending specific breed bans. This is the 2021 number 11 ordinance, this is the second reading. Ms. Ledger, if you would, please.
City of Dayton, Kentucky ordinance number 2021 number 11, an ordinance repealing section 91.24 of the City of Dayton Code of Ordinances, whereas the City Council of the City of Dayton, Kentucky desires to remove breed specific references from the provision dealing with dangerous animals in chapter 91 of the City of Dayton Code of Ordinances. Second reading.
Thank you, Ms. Ledger. Do I have a motion to pass 2021 number 11?
I'll make that motion.
Member Neiman made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it for the comments.
So, Member Kelly did it for the comments. That opens it up for the comments, Ms. Kelly is, you're accepting them. So, motion to the May, secondment accepted. Do we have any comments regarding 2021 number 11?
Yes.
Member Volter, you have the floor, sir.
So I, much like Mr. Hall that was here before, I kind of view this as a public safety issue. And I did some research on pit bulls, and like, I found out some positive information according to the research. Supposedly the temperament of a pit bull is that of a mid-pack, mid-range of dogs. It's not... It's not too violent, it's not too calm, it's in the middle, the temperament is. But yet, it is the most deadly breed in the United States.
May I ask your source?
Dog Bite Order is one, right here, okay? And then Petpedia is another, okay? And there's twenty sources on that article.
Petpedia actually is not in favor of breed-specific legislation, we contacted them.
Well, I'm not saying they're in favor of it, that's where I have the deadly, the deadly, it's breed to numbers.
That article is actually a specific weird incident where they published that. It was a third-party journalist, and they said that they've had a lot of problems after they published that, but it's too, it's too hard to get the genie back in the bottle. But just telling you.
Okay, well, I'm just saying. But, so, they're supposedly not more aggressive than other dogs. But, again, I'm just saying, they are, by the research that I got, now, you can dispute it, I guess you are, they're the most deadly breed. According to this, from two thousand and five to two thousand and seventeen, the pit bull was responsible for two hundred and eighty-four deaths.
Is that in the United States or North America?
United States. A Rottweiler was responsible for forty-five, German Shepherd, twenty, you go down from there.
Where'd you get that information?
That's Dog Bite Order, okay? So, the other thing is that, and I think what Scott was, he must've got that same information. In two thousand and nineteen, there were forty-six dog fatalities, and thirty-three of those were caused by pit bulls. That's the information that he had, I'm sure he used the same source because he quoted the Dog Bite Order, okay? Pit bulls among the top abused animals in the country, okay? Least wanted by the shelters. And I don't know if you guys saw this story two weeks ago on Channel Twelve, WKRC?
The homeless story?
Yeah, anybody see it?
Yeah.
Where the lady was house-sitting three pit bulls, young mother, twenty-seven, she didn't come home, wound up killed by, by the pit bulls, all of them killed. It was horrible.
Did you, did you look further into that story? Or was that, was that it for that story?
I, the gentleman raised the pit bulls as a hobby himself, I do know, and said that, but I didn't look any further into that, no. So, my personal feeling is, like, I fear pit bulls, so if a pit bull's walking down the street, I'm going to the other side.
You fear your service dog?
I'm gonna get, that, that dog is not a pit bull. He might be part pit, but he's not a pit bull. You know, no, I didn't fear that dog, no. A full-bred pit bull on a leash, I don't, I'm not gonna get around.
Just, just to confer, or, to understand legislation, or, any part pit on our legislation?
Yeah, yeah, just ban.
So, okay, just, just making sure-
Yeah, but that dog didn't bother me, no. A pit, a real pit, full pit, yeah, bothers me. So, I'm like Scott, I don't think you can put the genie back in the bottle. Once, once you-
Pit bull.
Once you do this, and something happens, I just, I, I don't want it on ban.
I know, but the ordinance states anything with a pit in it, correct? Is that what you just stated?
I think there's a certain, isn't there-
Characteristics, though.
Characteristics, so it's based on appearance, person-
Yeah.
So, that would make hers-
It's visual, yeah. And I, the question that Joe asked was legitimate, is a service dog something that you can ban? I understand that. I'm just saying that I, I think these dogs are dangerous, that's my opinion.
Okay, I have a, did you read the committee report that we did?
I did.
Okay. We were trying to assemble information in the last month because Joe requested a committee, and I sent that out, and we addressed a lot of the things that you were talking about. I don't know about, I don't know whether I should read the whole thing, but we, there's so many national organizations that do not support breed-specific legislation, so many. We talked to, including veterinarian, we talked to Chief Capel, we talked a lot to Terry Baker, who said that it is not innately a more dangerous dog than any other kind of dog. And, I'll just read this one part. It was about the ted, whatever, hold on a second.
I'll use the restroom, I'll pick up. I've heard this story.
You heard this, did you read it? Okay. All right. Follow your opinions regarding breed-specific dog legislation of a group of experts, professionals, and organizations compiled by council members Neiman, Kelly, and Neary. One, Terry Baker, Campbell County Animal Control Officer, does not support breed-specific legislation. According to Officer Baker, dogs can be confiscated due to having the predominant characteristics of a pit bull, and that is just a visual. They can dispute it with a vet's letter or a DNA test. She, hold on, DNA test, this is what's going on right now. There are no DNAs, DNA tests that you could really, let me back up. If you don't want your dog taken away, you won't get your dog taken away, if you know what to do. You have two options, you either get a vet report or a DNA test. She said that enforcing this is ridiculous, because people go to the vet, they say, I have a whatever, and the, and the vet reports that back, and you hand it in, and she cannot take action about this dog.
Yeah, I'm aware of it.
Number two, the DNA test, she said they don't, they aren't as specific because it's not a real breed pit bull. So it could come and be like a terrier, like a Jack Russell terrier, they can't force that either. So the only dogs that are being taken away are people who can't figure out the system. Okay. But she said that innately, they are no different than any other dog, no more aggressive than any other dog. So why aren't we applying these kind of fears to all these other dogs? All these Rottweilers, Dobermann, Blubbit, like, white pit bull, when so many experts are saying there's no innate difference with a pit bull than any other kind of dog?
So all these, all this information that I looked at on the internet, all those reports were photos-
Okay, yeah.
Are all wrong.
Maybe. Sources, sources are extremely important, that's why I wish that you would've contributed this to our committee report, so we could look into it. I know that dogbite.com is supposed to be really shady, but, I don't know, but I would've liked to have taken, I don't know who they are, I don't have time to like figure out where's this website.
Some of them are pretty-
Okay, and Petpedia, bed hip, yes?
No, I was, I just was looking on-
Okay. I think that the whole point of, of this whole thing is, we specified pit bulls because it has been believed, or it has been said, that they are innately more aggressive, more dangerous than any other breed of dog. And there's just, when I started doing these reports, I thought, oh, we're gonna get it one way or the other, but it is overwhelmingly the opposite, and even I was very surprised. So many organizations-
I don't disagree with what you're saying in terms of, of what the experts say about their temperament, their aggressiveness, and all that. The only thing I'm disagreeing with is, it seems to me that they kill more people than any other breed. Now, you're saying that's not true.
I don't know if that's true, I've never seen that anywhere, and I've heard, I wouldn't take Dog Bite-
Bumblebees kill more than forty-six people a year.
I don't know, I don't, I can't research it right now.
I'm just saying, that's the research I gave up on.
You know, I've never seen that figure, but-
That's, that's my whole argument. It's not that, you know, they say they're not aggressive, they say they have a medium temperament, you know, those kinds of things, but yet, all the other information I was looking at say, they killed two hundred and eighty-four people as versus forty-five or whatever.
I don't know, I don't know where that comes from. I mean, I wouldn't want, I, I mean-
It's right there in front of you, that.
Petpedia?
Oh, yes, wow.
Petpedia is totally against this ban.
They're totally against-
Well, I, I can't help that, this-
Well, that's your source.
But that's the source.
But that's the source that says they kill, that's the source-
That's that one article that we ended up contacting them, because it's like, what's the deal?
That's the source that says they kill so many people. I mean, if you're saying they're against it, that's fine. I'm just saying they kill more people than any other breed.
We, because you said that the first time, we looked up Petpedia.
Can you please sit down, Mr. Volter? I'm sorry, you're, you're standing over a councilman, that's just not a position to be in during this meeting. I'm sorry to call you out on that, but you're hovering over the county.
I'm, I didn't-
I'm just saying, you're, you're hovering over her.
She's okay with it. You're not gonna persuade her that way.
Body language is a lot.
It does.
You're right. So anyone else have any other comments? I think he said that was his whole comment.
I guess it's cold, thanks Scott. You've got two over here that you'll never, they're buddies.
I know.
Mr. Volter, are you ready for your question?
I'm ready.
All right, thank you very much, sir.
I'm just curious, how many people on council read our committee report?
I was just gonna say that, as part of that committee, you know, I started out, you know, Petpedia was one of the first sources that I came up with, I just did a random Google search. And then doing more of a deep dive and looking into things, it was definitely interesting. And I did not see anyone else speaking about that particular statistic you brought up, Jeff. But mostly what a lot of other communities found was that you were putting a lot of pressure onto either their police or their animal control to, you know, basically be these DNA specialists for these animals, and make a determination on someone's family pet just based on their, their appearance, not their actions. And as communities looked at this and everything, a lot of what came out of it was that they felt that, you know, being better about enforcing your leash laws, and, you know, keeping, you know, making people responsible, more responsible for taking care of their animals, actually led to better safety in the communities versus just saying a specific animal wasn't welcome in the community. So I thought it was, you know, it was very interesting for me to participate on that.
Thank you for your service on that, Ms. Kelly. Do you have any other comments regarding 2021 number eleven? You wanna go first?
About what?
I don't know if you had any comments.
I have no comments.
I do. Remember Mary, the floor's yours, sir. We're not alone, okay? I mean, it's, it, some people have made this out to be Dayton's moving backward and everything else. I mean, Alexandria, Augusta, Bracken County, Elsmere, Fort Thomas, Lewis County, Lewis County, the whole county. There are plenty of cities and counties that have these bans, okay? So we're not alone here, it's not like we're working in the nineteenth century or anything. I wanna say I'm really proud of this council. I, I love this council, because for the most part, we came into this open-minded, this is the first real controversial thing we've had to decide on. I respect everybody's opinion, but mostly I respect the research that's gone into all of this. Whether you're gonna call some of it fake news, we've all had dogs, so we all have invested interest in this. That, this is what city council's supposed to do. I don't think any of us are taking this decision lightly. I know I'm not, I've spent far too much time on this, researching, and listening, and talking, and texting, and everything else. I've had dogs almost all my life. When I was eighteen, I bought an Irish setter puppy. I didn't know what I was doing, I, I didn't know anything about training dogs, I was too busy with school and being a teenager. But whenever we took that dog out in the wood shooting, that dog already knew how to hunt. He wasn't afraid of gunshots, he always went to the right, range where he shot, and he could flush out game. He was a goofy bird dog, just like you hear Irish setters, had the great sense of smell and could run, a natural hunting dog. Another dog I had, Rizzo, was a Doxen terrier mix. He was a rescue, had some baggage, but if there was a mole in the yard, that dog would dig as quick as could be, he could dig five feet and grab that mole. I tried to break him of that habit. I didn't train him on that habit, but that was in his Doxen breed. Every dog has their own quirks and habits, usually specific to the breed. Greyhounds run, hounds follow a scent, labs are bred as companion dogs. It's not totally a matter of responsible ownership. Dogs have been bred for different purposes for hundreds of years, and those traits and tendencies can't be diluted enough in just a few generations. I feel bad for pit bulls, I really do, they get a bad reputation, because they were only doing what they were trained and bred for hundreds of generations to do. They were bred for centuries specifically to fight and kill other dogs. And pit bull fighting is still going on in this country, in this state, even very close by to here. If you've ever seen one of those videos, you'd be horrified about how such a sweet little puppy could do that to another sweet little puppy.
To have a race.
All pit bulls are now descendants of those fighting dogs. And for some reason, now pit bulls are a cool breed, and there's a lot of unscrupulous breeders out there pushing these pit bulls. I don't understand it. Pit bulls don't just bite, they attack. And those attacks are often bloody and severe, and often those attacks are on innocent pets, or the owners who are trying to protect their pets, or any human that they feel threatened by. And those aggressive tendencies can't be diluted enough in just a few generations. The training to attack and kill is in their breed. There are different opinions on banning pit bulls that I've heard, and they seem to be very generational. Little kids, they're innocent, they don't know, they think every dog is safe and loving and pettable. Most kids have no fear of dogs, which might be why they get attacked so often. Middle-aged folks seem to think they can handle any dog, and now pit bulls are trendy, but sometimes, they don't know, or they ignore the past pit bull issues. And the shelters are full of pit bulls, probably because, most of them are there because their owners found out how tough that breed can be, and dumped them, or their fences couldn't contain them. Older folks, I'll pull out my old fart card here, older folks around fifty and older have a general distrust or outright fear of pit bulls. I'll play that card and join that group. We remember why this ban was put in place, because until about ten or fifteen years ago, almost every pit bull owner was just trying to be intimidating and aggressive. And as different communities banned pit bulls, their owners would move into another city that didn't ban them. Dayton was one of the last cities in this metro area to pass this ban, and since so many dogs were grandfathered in, it took a long time to get this issue under control, and a lot of folks were scared of walking around this town. Especially those who lived there their whole lives, they felt in danger when a pit bull walked nearby, and that still applies with many of us. We, I, some say there's a media bias against pit bulls, that all we hear about is pit bull attacks and not, never attacks by other breeds. I think that's because other dogs, they, all dogs bite, but when a pit bull bite, the damage is so much worse than other breeds. One statistic said, whether it's true or not, sixty-seven percent of the dog attacks on people requiring medical treatment involve pit bulls, but pit bulls only make up six percent of the dog population. And many of these attacks are on young, innocent kids who don't know better, or on strangers who just happened upon, just walking by. And that doesn't include the attacks on other pets, and in those fights, the pit bull is gonna win. There are horror stories almost every week on the news about a pit bull attack somewhere in the country. I don't want that here in Dayton, I don't. That's why I believe, that's why I believe breed-specific legislation can be a tool to protect our citizen. I know enforcement's tough, it's a judgment call for administration, and it often becomes a police issue, because people love their dogs, and a lot of you, that's part of my family. First responders are often put in difficult situations involving aggressive dogs, but I've never heard of a police officer having to shoot a golden retriever or a chihuahua to stop an attack. But that's part of the job of administration, and law enforcement, and animal enforcement gets paid due. I've heard some people wanna move to Dayton, but they can't because of the pit bull ban. I say, thanks for respecting our laws, but you can't move here with your pit bull to Fort Thomas, or South Gate, or Pendleton County, or many other communities. But having Dayton known as a safe community for its citizens will attract more other good people that don't need a pit bull to be happy and be contributed citizens. We're doing fine without them here. To my fellow council members and to administration, we were elected to provide a safe and comfortable community for our citizens. Law was put in place as a matter of public safety for the community as a whole. Eliminating the pit bull ban does nothing to improve our city, or to make it a better place for the majority of our citizens to live. I believe it would have the opposite effect. Hardest part of our decision is separating wants from needs. A few people may want pit bulls, as if it's gonna make their life better, but every one of our citizens needs to feel safe in their homes and in their city, and it's our job to provide that. Our citizens need to feel safe, whether it's on their own property or walking, and most of Dayton is made of very walkable neighborhoods and properties that are closely packed together, so one bad issue is felt by many. I'd rather be safe than have to tell someone I'm sorry. I'd rather work on what the city needs versus the ones of just a few. So I, for one, will be voting no. of just a few. So I for one will be voting no on rescinding the pit bull ban in our city. But if this legislation passes and the pit bull ban's lifted, I hope we got them wrong and we never have a problem. And regardless of whether or not this ban is lifted, I want this council and this administration to get the work immediately to enforce and strengthen our dangerous animal and vicious dog ordinances to protect our citizens. There's a lot of holes in those ordinances and work together to make Dayton a safer community 'cause that's our job. I've, I've spent too much time on this in the past six months. I've lost a lot of sleep over this. Um, but I, as I said, I would rather be safe than be sorry. That's all I have, sir. Thank you for letting me go on.
Thank you, member of the hearing. Any other comments regarding 2021 number 11?
I do.
Remember Neiman?
Um, a month ago, I think Scott brought up the ordinance and we had a discussion about it. And, um, Joe, you asked us to participate in the committee.
Correct.
And to do the due diligence because I'm, I'm pretty sure we're all very concerned with public safety. I agree. And so do Christine. Now that we're on the 24th hour, um, you've made a lot of statements that in my research, I've either found are not true or I'd really like to look into, but it's too late. You were on the committee.
Yes.
I'm, why haven't you, I haven't heard hardly anything from you the whole month? Why are you now saying this when I can't really use it to vote? Because I can't look into this or consider anything you've said except at face value by a written statement?
This is my opinion. I've listened to many other opinions and I've heard-
Why haven't you brought that to the committee?
I played devil's advocate in our committee debate.
That doesn't make any sense.
But what I'm also hearing is statistics on this side from this source and statisti- I mean, I'm tired of hearing fake news accusations. I don't know what to believe, okay?
Then you bring it to the committee and we talk about it. Research. I, I can't vote-
I don't know that you couldn't, that you could research anymore to, to-
Yes.
preempt my feeling of-
Okay, then those are feelings.
And that's basically what I'm voting on, is my opinion as someone who, uh, I've done a lot of research on this and I've-
No, I, but you haven't shared it with us at all.
There's probably some research that others have done and haven't shared.
Okay.
This is my-
But we're trying to make-
There's no research in here. This is my opinion.
Okay.
Okay. And the 67% of-
That's clear.
Of, of dog bites requiring medical attention is actually for, whether you want to discard that source or not, is from that dogbites.org, okay?
I do.
Uh, some people do. I get it. People love their dogs. They personalize their dogs.
Not about loving a dog. I wanna make sure that we have done our due diligence and we make a really good decision here for the safety of Dayton. This isn't a joke. It isn't 'cause I think dogs are cute. I probably wouldn't have brought this up, but since it has been brought up, I wanna make sure we do our absolute due diligence. I've spent a lot of hours doing this. And so come in at the last hour and throw a bunch of like comments that we can't examine before we vote. I don't know how it's helpful.
Thank you.
What would, what could you?
Okay. One, the first responders, we have to protect them. We've already done that. We've already interviewed the first responders. What else did you do? Um-
There was a lady that, uh-
All, all this would, okay, they've been bred for centuries to be attack dogs. That is actually not true. They used to be nanny dogs, but I would be happy to research this and make sure we are absolutely correct and we're making decisions based on facts.
Would that affect your decision?
Maybe, maybe not. I, it, nothing is thrown out at the, at the last minute is gonna affect my decision. I, I have not been able to examine these. And considering you called for the committee and then didn't include any of this, I'm, I don't understand what this is. I, 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 okay. This would have been easy to do. Um, attacks on innocent pets. Okay. Um, can't, can't take it out of them. Okay, with that professional saying that there is nothing inherently different about pit bull than any other breed. I'm not looking for that information. I was surprised at how consistently I got that. But you were saying, oh, they're bred and you can't take it out of them. Okay, I'm dismissing that. Attack and kill, it's in their breed, it's in their blood. Again, um, why are they in shelters? Because people won't take care of them? No, they're in shelters because these breed-specific legislation makes people have to surrender their dogs.
What percentage of guarantee was this?
How do I know? This is done in committee. I am not a, I'm not a robot. I don't have an internet access through my head. Um, this could all have been researched. Um, you know, these sources could have been researched and we all are concerned with safety. And talking about as they get, as they adopt breed-specific legislation, this is old. They're, people aren't like getting on the bandwagon with this now. This is old and they are shedding this as new information and new light comes out. And as Harry Baker said, we're evolving. Town by town, city by city, they're evolving and dropping this stuff. It's, it's, you know, so, uh, I wouldn't say that in response to some wild attacks everywhere, communities are one by one adopting BSL. They're actually shedding it. They're getting rid of it one by one. Bellevue's done it two years ago, no incidents. Silver Grove, done, not Silver Grove, yeah, Silver Grove. One by one, they're going down.
There were no incidents that caused the police reports to be filed.
Okay. Then, then you don't, I know a bunch of people in Bellevue and I know the mayor and I know Shalke, Christine, she's all over it. I could've said, tell me, what do you have? But we can't now.
I have counsel. This argument could go on for-
Right.
Thank you. And I appreciate everyone's due diligence in this. Our council work or the committee work on it. Do we think we have enough information to make a vote or should we argue this? Because currently it's nine o'clock, which makes this a 14-hour dog years argument. If you would like to turn this into 21 dog years, let me know.
We have two motions, so we can take the vote.
We do, but comments are open. We'd like to take the vote.
All right.
All right. It's been six months. Let's put this to rest. Put this dog to rest. Remember, Ms. Ledger, would you please take a roll call?
Remember Volter?
No.
Remember Neiman? Or remember Neary, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Remember Neary?
No.
Remember Neiman?
Yes.
Remember Kelly?
I.
Remember Lovins?
Yes.
Remember Basler?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for your due diligence and your passion on both sides of this. We're gonna hold our open, uh, standing room only. All right. On to further business. First readings. Thankfully, we have 2021 number 12, amending the Dayton Code of Ordinance for Open Records. Ms. Ledger, please.
City of Dayton, Kentucky, ordinance number 2021 number 12, in ordinance amending section 36.05, section 36.07, and section 36.09A of the Dayton Code of Ordinances to update the manner by which open records are received and amended. The city's response time to these records requests from three to five days. And that's a first reading.
First reading only, three to five days, same as the previous. Now, moving along to resolution orders. This is, uh, 2021 number 106, Romeo appointing Kathy Ackerson to the Clerk of Enforcement Board. Letter.
City of Dayton, Kentucky, Resolution Order Number 2021 16R, a resolution order of the City Council of the City of Dayton, Kentucky, appointing Kathy Ackerson to the Code of Enforcement Board.
Do I have a motion to accept the appointment of Kathy Ackerson to the Code of Enforcement Board? Make the motion. Please, first, Ms. Kelly headed first?
I'm sorry.
That's all right. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes, nays? Any opposition? All right, passes. Resolution Order Number 2021 number 17, Romeo, job description for Assistant City Administrator. Ms. Ledger, please.
City of Dayton, Kentucky, Resolution Order Number 2021 number 17R, in order resolution adopting a job description for the position of an Assistant City Administrator.
Some move.
Do I have a chance to read that resolution? All right. I'm so moved by Member Volter. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, made by Ms. Basler. Do we have any comments regarding 2021 number 17 Romeo? Questions?
Uh, when will this job be listed?
Soon as, uh, this is done, we'll get on, on the web and we'll probably, maybe we'll, NKAD maybe to-
Definitely work NKAD.
To get it out into the, uh, public management community.
Same people who helped us with the city administration, uh, job search.
Do we have a timeline that you're gonna be accepting applications or?
Two weeks and then we'll, we'll, then we'll do formal, so you'll, you'll do it next month or so.
Yeah.
Two weeks, uh, accepting applications and we'll do interviews and then the formal process.
Thank you.
Very well. Any other comments regarding this? All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Do we, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Any abstentions? Some moves. Second to last resolution we have is number 2021, number 18, Romeo, amending C cap policies. Ms. Ledger, please.
City of Dayton, Kentucky, Order Resolution Number 2021 18R, Order Resolution Amending Grant Award Policies for the Commercial Community Advantage Program.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ledger. Do I have a motion to accept 2021 number 18 Romeo?
Some move.
Remember Neary's so moved. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Remember Kelly's? Is there another cat outside?
It's in here.
Oh, hey, cat?
Her food bowl's on the other side though, so I don't know if that's the side she should go on. I'll let her in. Okay. Cause I was like, there's a cat, there's a food bowl and a water bowl.
Should we go find her?
I'll take the cat and I'll find her.
Thank you, Ms. Volter. All right, so, uh, back to business. Remember Neary made it first, remember Kelly made it second. Do we have any questions? Comments concerned regarding 2021 number 18 Romeo?
Can you recap the changes from the existing system?
Yeah, so the primary change, there's several changes, uh, that were regarding the Main Street director. Now it's going to be the city administrator or his SED that handles this. So maybe this is the city manager will be in on this program. Who's gonna do economic development and housing development as well. The other change was focusing more on facade improvements instead of doing HVC and all the stuff that's inside. We still give you the right, the right project along and someone needs an HVAC system or something, you all can do that. But the real focus is primarily on facade improvements on the street to pre, to improve the street visibility in the community. But you have the ability to do something inside the building if you feel the project needs it.
And those will require council's approval, is that correct, what I see there?
The special-
Special.
The special things will require your approval. That's come before you all and we have to sign off on it. Facades will not. Facades will be, and we limited it in 10,000, I think, um, of facade.
Well, the facade, the facade was still need to, uh, go through the quarter of architectural review.
So we have to do that, yes. And it's, it says that in there too. It's up, it's up to $10,000 and it's only in the CBD, um, Central Business District or, um, in RFJJ District, government zone within 100 feet of six houses. So that's, that's the same rate as in the old C cap.
So no, nothing new there?
No.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Fawcett. Any other questions regarding 2021 number 18 Romeo?
Yeah, um-
Mr. Mayor.
To delay a little bit until Ms. Lovins comes back. Um, on the rental abatement, previously we had a, a little bit of an issue with, um, the rental abatement getting to the property owner. Um, duh, 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 the lease agreement. My, my concern is if the property owner would come back and say, I never got the rent. Do we pay the rent abatement to the merchant or to the, directly to the property owner?
To the merchant. He pays the full amount and we reimburse him for-
Oh, we reimburse. We do not pay in advance. So they do have to show proof that they-
Yes.
Maybe that's my, that covers that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other comments, questions, comments, concerns about 2021 number 18 Romeo? All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Comments are closed. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? Any abstentions? C cap, 2021 18 Romeo passes. Last thing we have, uh, two more.
Town history's already done.
Uh, we'll write it. So we have two more. Who's going on the second page? Uh, 2021 number 19 Romeo, authorizing the mayor to enter into a memor- memorial, memorial, memorial animal, memorial animal with the United States Army Corps of Engineers.
So a little background on this. According to me, without any development happens on the Riverfront and on the flood wall, they have to sign off on. In their past, individually, the developer will do something, they go to the corps and it will take time, you know, through the process and it took a lot of time. Developers wanted it done. They developed this due process and they implemented it in Newport and will be the second one to do it. That, they will go to the city and they want the city to pay a fee, but the city will make the developer pay that fee to us and, and then we get at the corps and they speed up the process. So the developer, we are responsible for paying the fee, but, um, we're following the same program that Newport has. We have an agreement with the developer. You pay, if we pay that fee, you have to pay us or you don't develop. So, uh, we have a form that they would require to sign and they'll pay it. So it just speeds up the process and the corps says that, um, it won't take, instead of taking months, it will take weeks for them to approve it when, when it's being paid upfront. So the federal government's basically saying, what you pay for are services. Uh, so we're selling the developer, we're paying for the services, but we're the ones who own the properties.
Would this have any effect on our Riverwalk project since the corps is involved in that?
Not, not really. It's, uh, because we own that, we own that property and that's our project anyway. And so this is just for third parties that are developing on there. So we will, we will have to pay for that. So it's not, it's not our grant fund would pay for it. We pay for it.
Understood. Thank you.
Any, any other questions, comments, concerns regarding this memorial animal? We got it right that time.
Never an agreement actually.
All right, closing.
What's that? What's the comments?
All right, closing comments in one, two, three. So all in favor of 2021 number 19 Romeo?
Aye.
Any ayes? Any abstentions? Your ayes have it.
Mayor, who made the motion in the second?
I don't think we did.
We did?
I, I don't think-
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think we made a motion.
I don't either.
I thought I did and Ms. Kelly seconded.
I think that was, that was the C cap.
That was C cap, yeah.
All right, we can go back.
I think it was. I think we should go back. I don't remember.
Do, do we have any motion to, uh, accept 2021 number 19 Romeo?
I'll make that motion.
Remember Neiman made it?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Basler. Any other comments regarding? All right, comments are closed. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? Any abstentions? All right, moving forward. Last thing on our resolution orders is number 2021, number 21 Romeo, appointing Laura Thompson to the Board of Architectural Review. Please.
City of Dayton, Kentucky, Resolution Order 2021 21R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Dayton, Kentucky, appointing Laura Thompson to serve on the Board of Architecture Review.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ledger. Do I have a motion to accept?
Some move.
Volter's moved. Do I have a second?
One second.
Remember Kelly's accepted. Second. Any comments? Closing three. Thank you for her service to the board. One. Comments are closed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Any abstentions? Some moves. Moving right along. The city administrator report. Ms. Fawcett.
About earlier, we had great news today. We acquired 701 Boone Street. That is our number one vacant property, abandoned property. Property number two is 705 Boone Street. We are now foreclosed and we filed a report on that two, two weeks ago. And, uh, there are two other properties on that list that we are getting close to having some action on, which we'll talk about in the next session. Uh, and we're working on a few other on the list. So we've really knocked quite a few, uh, we've knocked two of them out, one of them out for sure. One's in process and we're close to getting two other ones that are on the top 10 list. So I'm very happy about moving forward with that and- And at the foreclosure sale today, I told the best commissioner, he's gonna start seeing us a little bit more often down there. And we'll be down there, if not acquiring the properties, then making sure that we get paid our taxes and code fines that are due to us. So the good thing about it is our attorney's fees, we pay, but they come back to us as part of the fee awards, if there's enough recovery in the property, so we'll be down there a lot more. That's what we'll do.
Now, I have a question, when these properties are purchased, that's by authorization of administration. What fund does that money come out of?
Economic development.
Economic development, okay.
So, you know, right now, there might be something different in the future, we'll talk about that, but-
That's capital expenditures, I guess, the line I have.
What is that in there, is it that?
Yes, that's what I'm getting at, yeah.
Thank you.
That's your report, sir?
That's it.
Fantastic report. All right. Mr. Evanson, you have time for your city attorney's report.
I'll report, Mayor, thank you.
Very welcome. Thank you very much, Mr. Evanson. All right, we would like to open up the podium once again for audience report that if they would like to approach council, they are allowed to do so with a five minute limit on their comments. Please state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Sarah Shepherd. I'm a resident of one eleven Fifth Avenue. So as I mentioned earlier, I am a squeaky wheel, especially to Councilman Neary. My husband and I moved into that residence about three years ago, and we have quite the prime location for the O'Fallon and Manhattan Drive debacle, as I know, we all know and love that area. I do want to thank you all for putting the flashing stop sign there, it is greatly appreciated. But as that resident, I can tell you that on any given day, no one stops at either of those stop signs. Not to put more work on our city works, but the bush could use string. Thank you for that. Simply, we were on the strip a few days ago, and coming off of the drive, you couldn't even see the flashing stop sign until you were almost damn near on it. Most days, people don't even stop. I am waiting for the day that I'm reseller for my husband is T-boned, just by someone coming off of O'Fallon or from the drive, and I really just beseech council to really come up with some ways to protect our community. It's an excellent place to walk. The traffic is growing with more homes being built, which is awesome for the city. I just don't want this to end in tragedy, and I would much rather us as a city be proactive in this. I know Councilman Neary and I have talked about putting in pedestrian crosswalks. Ideally, it would be beautiful if we could move the O'Fallon stop sign back to closer to the street, since that seems to be the biggest area. I genuinely mean it when I invite everyone to come to my house for a barbecue. I will give you hot dogs and beer and whatever you may need, just so we can simply see what I'm talking about. During the great windchime debacle, I even talked to the officer, I'm so sorry, I'm blanking on your name, you're my boy Bill, though. He is on my street quite often, we have quite the colorful neighborhood of simply just parking on Fifth Ave for an hour and seeing how few people actually stop. And I'm not even talking about rolling stops, I'm just talking about people stopping. I do not want a city issue coming where they've known about this and someone gets struck, or a dog gets struck, or a car gets struck. I don't want that to happen, so I will continue to be a squeaky wheel until we can come up with some better solutions that are fiscally mindful. Thank you for your turn.
Is there a time of day that that happens more often than others?
Usually, it is during those peak commuting hours, where between four to six in the afternoon, and then between seven to nine in the morning. Weekends, there is no peak time, since people are coming to and from those areas.